To call this meeting to order, welcome everybody here in council chambers and of course those who might be viewing online. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council of the city of Kingman, Arizona. On our agenda tonight, we actually will turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for call to order and roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Pat.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Tony Henry of Kingman Nazarene Church. I would ask all of us to stand for that. And then afterwards, Counselor Smiley Ward will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we just thank you that we can come before you and just ask for prayer for all of our city officials, those who are elected and appointed to their positions. Father, we just ask that you give them wisdom and guidance and discernment in all of the decisions that they are making that affect the people in Kingman. Father, we just thank you for all of the wonderful blessings for this country where we still have the privilege to come and pray before city meetings. We thank you that you do lead and that you do guide us. We thank you for our city. We thank you for all of those who serve in our city. And we just ask you to be with our first responders, our medical fields, that you would just keep them safe and healthy. Things are still just kind of crazy, and we just need your love and your guidance. And Father, and this is the month of February, and so we just ask that you help us to remember that love should be done in all things, that we should have generosity of mind for our neighbors, and that we should just be more kind and loving, and what a better place it would be. So again, we just ask for your guidance here in this meeting, for all the things that was said, that we would bring glory to you. We just love you and thank you, Father, for all that you do, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Father.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431-03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First on our agenda, we have appointments to some of our commissions. One A, Clean City Commission Appointment. The Clean City Commission currently has three vacancies. One application from Pam Tappan has been received and provided for review to the council, liaison, city manager, and staff. Residency and voter registration status has been verified. Staff is recommending appointment of Pam Tappan to a four-year term beginning on February 7th, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2026. I was informed that Ms. Tappan is probably not going to be here tonight, but Counselor Staley, do you have any comment on this?
Just a few. Mrs. Tappan had been here, spoke in front of us at a previous council meeting to talk about blight and cleaning up Kingman, and I think several of us had reached out to her and asked her to please apply for this commission. So we're so glad that she did that. She's very passionate about this subject. And so with that, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Pam Tappan to the Clean City Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number B, Board of Adjustments Appointment. The Board of Adjustments currently has two vacancies. One application from Gary Fredrickson has been received and provided for review to the council liaison, city manager, and staff. Residency and voter registration status has been verified. Staff is recommending appointment of Gary Fredrickson to a four-year term beginning on February 7th, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2026. And likewise, I don't think Mr. Fredrickson is here tonight. Counselor Walker, I think you're assigned to that board. Do you have any comment on that?
Oh, I'd just like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Fredrickson to a four-year term.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of Mr. Fredrickson be appointed to this, to the Board of Adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, Call to the Public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on future agenda. Clerk Meredith?
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. We do not have anybody request to join us remotely this evening, and no written comments were received in advance. We do have one speaker signed up in the audience tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Beth Ferry, would you like to come up and address council?
I would like that. My name is Beth Ferry, and I'm a board member of Kingman Main Street. Two weeks ago, we initiated a petition, Save the Downtown Infrastructure Design Project. So I just wanted to update you, at this time, we have 769 signatures, and we'll continue to keep you updated on the status of this petition. I think within the next few days, we'll actually have a written petition available for you guys to see, actually see signatures and such. That will be dropped off at your mailboxes. Since our last city council meeting, downtown Kingman has seen the opening of two new businesses, with two additional businesses set to open soon. Mojave County District Supervisor Travis Lingefelter shared the following, there really is no other one-third square mile within Kingman city limits that boasts a greater concentration of private capital investment than downtown Kingman. I thought that was really wonderful and thought I'd share that. And lastly, we are really so very grateful for the support of you council members who recognize the importance of a vibrant downtown. It is the shared vision that will continue to move Kingman from just a gas stop to a destination. So we'll continue to keep you informed, and we are so very grateful for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Ferry. Item number three, Consent Agenda. I hope all counselors and myself, we've had a chance to review our consent agenda. And it says, "All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately." Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion?
Mayor, I have a few.
Yes, Counselor Walker.
Items C, D, E, H, I, and J.
H, I, and J. Okay. Can we have a motion then approving items A, B, C, no, I'm sorry, A, B, E, F, G, and K on the consent agenda?
Some of.
Did you say?
I had E.
Did you say E?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, let me rephrase that then. So can we have a motion approving items A, B, F, G, and K?
Some of.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of those items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Counselor Walker, starting with item number C.
Yeah, I just thought this would be a good item to pull and talk about so our residents can hear what we're spending the money on and where it's being paid for.
Okay. Manager Foggan? Who do we want to address in that as far as staff?
That would be Rob.
Okay. Rob, I guess come up and...
Oh, I'm sorry. Phil, I'm sorry.
Phil?
Mayor, as Phil was walking up, could you just read the description on that?
I'll be glad to. I'm sorry. Thank you. Engineering, this is item C, Engineering Services Contract for Foothill Zone Water Improvements Design Concept Report. E, it's engineering 23-0005. The Foothill Zone Water Improvements Project is needed to implement a project identified in the city's water master plan. To start engineering design for the project, a design concept report, DCR, will be prepared. The DCR will analyze and provide recommendations for the configuration of a new water storage tank, booster station, and water mains that will serve the Foothill's water pressure zone. Ultimately, these improvements will provide additional water storage, pressure stabilization, and redundancy to the pressure zone. Staff recommends that the city council approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on the city's behalf. Mr. Alred, we're glad you're here tonight to answer any questions. Could actually, could you, really actually for the public, I think most of us know where this is, where this is located, the Foothill's area of town, but can you restate that and where we're talking about?
So what we're looking primarily is for a new tank south of town. So this will be a little bit farther south than Rancho Santa Fe and Walpie Foothill Estates. So what we're looking to do is site a new tank that will help us provide better pressures, particularly in the Walpie Foothill Estates area. Right now, there's a zone there that's just being fed primarily from a hydromatic tank. And so this is going to help us provide greater redundancy and more stabilized pressures in the area, and also help us to deal with growth in the future.
Okay. Other questions from council or comments?
And it'll be paid for by the enterprise fund for water, correct?
Correct. Okay.
That's all I had. I just wanted to make sure residents are educated on it and know what we're doing.
Okay. I appreciate that, Counselor Walker.
I'll make a motion to approve item C.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D on our consent agenda, Approval of a Contingency Transfer Between Funds. The draw site litigation is ongoing, and each fiscal year, an appropriation to cover outside legal services for the draw site litigation is included in the adopted budget. Although the fiscal year 2022-23 adopted budget includes a $50,000 appropriation for these services, it is expected that another $120,000 may be needed. Since these monies were not budgeted, a contingency transfer of $120,000 is being requested from the airport fund to the insurance services fund, which is where all draw site litigation expanses are appropriated. Staff recommends the city council approve a transfer of $120,000 in contingency from the airport fund to the insurance services fund.
That would be me.
I was instinct, we were going to pick on you, Carl.
Yeah, and I would first like to state, I don't expect to spend that much money, but I'd like to be cautious so I don't have to come back. We're at the point with the draw site litigation that we are coming to a conclusion soon that's requiring a lot of communication between the city, our outside consultants, as well as Department of Justice. I am hoping that we will be seeing a resolution very soon, that I will be providing an update to give you guys the good details that we have coming forward. But this does require a lot of communication that just takes a little bit of money unfortunately to facilitate.
Okay. And of course, these monies come from the, as I mentioned in reading, the airport fund, which is monies that are from properties that are sold, correct?
Now you're asking the wrong person of where the money's coming from. I just spend it.
Tina, can we?
These are actually being allocated out of the airport's contingency. So this is part of the airport's budget.
Okay. But is that, just for, you know, once again clarification, is that monies that is built up that we can use from sale of property, or that has to be kept separate?
No, that's part of their contingency, which is all part of leasing, sales. I mean, it's just contingency.
Money is generated inside the airport.
At the airport, yep.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor, one more question.
Yes, Counselor Walker.
Once we settle with the federal government on this, would that money be transferred back into the airport?
The money, like this unspent money right here from this contingency transfer? Are you talking about the settlement money?
The settlement money, would we pay that money back into the airport?
Whatever settlement money that we receive that is left over from the remediation would be, is airport money.
Okay.
If that's clear.
Great. Thanks for all the information. Can we have a motion then to approve item 3D, Approval of Contingency Transfer Between Funds?
I will make a motion to approve item D.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 3E, Groundwater and Well Evaluation Phase 1. The scope of phase one is to evaluate four of the wells in the downtown area. This will include pulling the pump, video inspection of well, cleaning, and an eight-hour step rate pump test. This will help determine the well's current productivity and efficiency to provide recommendations for future improvements and operations. Staff recommends approval.
Mayor, Council.
Rob Owen, glad to have you here.
Development program. So the first phase is try to increase the production out of the downtown wells. Those are Sacramento Valley, considered Sacramento Valley wells. So that's what the work under this contract would do, would be to evaluate those four wells downtown, test them, and give us recommendations on what we can do to increase the production from those wells. And this funding would come out of the Colorado River Fund.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions for Mr. Owens from council? Okay, can we have a motion then approving item 3E, Groundwater and Well Evaluation Phase 1?
I will make a motion to approve item E.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 3H, Airport Cafe Interior Renovation. The project is for consideration and approval for renovations of interior of the airport cafe. It includes new windows, doors, HVAC system corrections, and restrooms updates. Staff recommends approval. Jack?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Background on this project is what it says it is. Have some of the original windows in the airport, and so we'll be going through and correcting or updating those, help with some energy efficiency. Some of those are cracked and difficult to replace. The bathrooms, there's probably not a lot of insulation, if any, in the walls. We actually have the plumbing in the walls freeze up in the wintertime, so we'll be correcting some of that, updating the fixtures, just a refresh of the airport terminal building bathroom. So if there's something specific I can answer in regard to questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Any questions for Mr. Plante?
Where's the funding for this project coming from?
Airport also.
Airport also. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Watkins, if I may?
Yes, Counselor.
I'm not sure if this would be a question for Mr. Plante or someone else, but I'm wondering, how much does the cafe make or generate revenue on an annual basis?
So the cafe leases space from us. It's actually a private group that operates that. I don't know the lease amount from them between us and the city off the top of my head.
Do we have that answered by any chance, Manager Foggan?
Of how much the lease is?
Yes.
Yeah.
Our finance director, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We generate about $8,500 a year from the cafe's lease.
$8,500 a year?
Correct.
And this plan is to spend $179,367 for remodeling and renovations?
So the airport cafe is separate from, and maybe that's a misleading title, because you have the pilot's lounge and the airport terminal building. There's no commercial service in that right now, but that's, call it our side of the building. This isn't doing anything inside the airport cafe itself, so if you go out there, it's kind of another set of doors into the cafe area. This is on what I'd call our side of the building.
Who are the primary users of these airport cafe renovations?
I mean, really, airport users. Again, it has a pilot's lounge and that has chart room and some other aviation-related amenities for the airport.
How many airplanes are coming in and out of the airport on an annual basis?
Great question. I don't have the answer for it at the moment. I could wing a number, but I'd rather go back and give you a real number for what that is.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thanks. And our airport manager is not here tonight, so...
Doug would be all over that.
But probably, Counselor Pat brings up an interesting, it probably shouldn't be called cafe, it probably should be called airport terminal.
That would have been a better term for that, correct?
So Carl, is that all right if we call it that?
It is.
Okay. So any other questions for Mr. Plante? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion then for item 3H, Airport Terminal Interior Renovation.
Mayor Watkins, is it possible to trail this matter to the next city council meeting until we get that information about how many airplanes are coming in and out?
Mr. Foggan? Can we table that? Is that all right?
You can make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Pat, it sounds like you want to make a motion then.
I would like to make a motion to table this agenda item until next meeting and have further information provided. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling motion 3H, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. We will table that till next city council meeting then. So we get some more information. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Some more information as to what?
Well, it's the finance part of it, right? Counselor Pat?
Yes, I would like more information on the financial impact that this will either benefit or bring for us. How many airplanes are we seeing on an annual basis? What's the foot traffic if we could gather those numbers? I just want to make sure that we're spending the taxpayer dollars wisely.
Okay, so just to be clear, this is airport funding, and no taxes go into the funding of the airport currently?
Okay. Thank you, Manager Foggan.
Okay, thank you. Item 3I, Change Order Number 1 for KPD, Kingman Police Department, Exterior Painting. Authorization to accept change order number 1 to the Kingman Police Department Exterior Painting Project. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Plante, again.
Sorry, didn't realize I was up twice in a row. So background on this one, doing exterior repairs and paint for KPD. We had included some money for spot repairs of stucco. There were some failed sections that was delaminating off of the substrate, be it brick or other frame surfaces. When we went through and started blasting that, water blasting that to get the loose paint and make repairs, the damage or the failed areas were larger than anticipated. So this includes additional spot repairs. We had the funds left over in the CIP sheet, so we did actually add some canopy areas that we had not anticipated or captured initially, and then the additional primer to help prevent the failures that we're seeing at this point.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Plante on this matter?
Yeah, and this is being funded out of?
This is a general fund item, capital. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's a general fund capital.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I hate to be a pain, but I just think our residents needed to hear what we were spending money on, where it was coming from. I will make a motion to approve item J.
I'll second that motion.
That's item 3I.
Yes, oh, my bad, 3I.
Okay. All those in favor of approving item 3I on the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 3J, Resolution Number 5446, Authorization to Submit an Application for the Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant. On December 15th, 2022, the United States Department of Transportation issued a notice of funding opportunity for their Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity RACE Grant Program. The project is expected to cost $40,836,000. With the state of Arizona's $20 million contribution, the remaining $20.8 million is currently being funded by the city and the developer. Staff recommends city council approval of Resolution Number 5446, authorizing the submission of the RACE Grant Program applications in the amount of $20,836,000 to construct the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway Traffic Interchange, and the mayor to sign all related grant documents. Counselor Walker, since you pulled this?
Yeah, my question was, the city's part of this project, I thought, was about 16 million, so we're asking for more than what we're on the table for. So the remaining money, if we were to get it, where would that be going? Are we going to offset the...
So I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question.
Okay, the grant that we're applying for is for $20,830,000. The city stake on this is what, 16 million?
So the combined developer-city contribution to the TI is $20 million.
Okay. But the city's part was not to exceed?
Well, the city's portion is half of what's not covered by the state.
Okay.
So that's what the agreement...
Okay, I just thought we were capped at like the 16 million part.
No, no. We basically share half the cost with the developer for the remainder of what's not covered by the 20 million that the state...
We never had a not to exceed number on our side.
No, no.
Okay. I just thought that was more than our not to exceed on the city's side, but I didn't know why we were asking for more, or where that money went.
Well, so like I said, the TI is, this is for the TI, and the TI would be 10 million for us and 10 million for the developer.
Okay.
Yep.
That answers my question.
Okay, and of course, this being a grant, obviously, if we are awarded that grant, it's just another big plus for the city. Okay.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve. If nobody else has any questions on it?
Okay.
I'll second.
Item J.
All those in favor of item 3J, Resolution Number 5446, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's all of our consent agenda. Item number four, Old Business, we have none. Item number five, New Business. Item 5A, Public Hearing and Consideration Ordinance Number 1947, Resoning Certain Property from Residential Single Family, Minimum of 6,000-Square-Foot Lot, R16 to Commercial Service Business, C3, Located on the East Side of Market Street Behind 1707 East Andy Devine Avenue. Dr. Christopher, is it Reno or Reno? Reno? Applicant and Property Owner and Selberg &amp; Associates Incorporated Agents Have Requested the Resoning of Certain Property from Residential Single Family Minimum 6,000-Square-Foot, R16 to Commercial Service C3. The purpose of the rezoning is so that the subject property will match the zoning of the adjacent parcel at 1707 East Andy Devine Avenue. The intent is to develop a physical therapy facility on the main parcel with a minimal portion of the area subject to rezoning, held, or to rezoning may be used for an outdoor recreation area. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on January 10th, 2023, to consider the request. The commission heard from neighboring property owners who expressed concerns over the request and potential impact on the nearby residential areas. The commission voted seven to zero to recommend reducing the area subject to rezoning from six lots to the southernmost three lots, lots 26 through 28, subject to certain conditions, based on their findings made in accordance with Section 2-50.020(c) 5 of the Kingman Zoning Code. Staff has prepared an ordinance for council consideration in accordance with the recommended conditions of approval and the recommended reduced area subject to the zoning change. Staff recommends approval. Gary?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. The mayor pretty much gave my staff report, so I'm done now. We'll just go through this, and you mentioned a lot of the details, but this is generally a rezon request from R16 Residential Zone to Commercial C3 Zone for an area. If you know, we'll probably get to that if this, for some reason, this isn't responding. I guess that'll have to do. This is the area that is where the Spay and Neuter, the new building on top of the hill there, on Andy Devine. It is the old vacant property down below, and if you notice, they have a very nice-looking rock outcropping along the edge there. And so the property that in question is sort of divided by that lower level and the upper level. The upper level is the area that's zoned residential, and the lower area, of course, is next to Andy Devine, is the commercial. The request... The request needs to comply, and we'll get into that, with the general plan map, which is the visioning document for the city. And currently, the general plan designates the entire request as neighborhood, community commercial, sorry. And which is consistent with all the areas to the south and across Andy Divine. The current zoning and utilities map here, the area in the red box is the subject property. Again, it's currently zoned R16, but again designated as commercial on the general plan. So the zoning, of course, gives you the current property rights that you can build or or develop the property. Utilities, there is a four inch water main in Market Street, and that is the only infrastructure there. The site, the subject site itself is not served by sewer. This is a better informative map. This shows that sort of outcropping, however, the subject site label is kind of on on top of that. But this red area encompasses the requested area to rezone. And you can kind of see how the lower south east portion of that rock outcropping shares some similarities with the commercial area, the rest of the commercial area next to Andy Divine. So this was a interesting request for rezoning, and I think the the new zoning codes requirements for neighborhood meetings and that outreach, as well as the diligent work that the commission did, really came together and and showed how it how it all works out in the end. So, and a recommendation to you. This is our posting the signs for the zoning notice. You can see a nice, this is on top of the bluff there, nice view of the Wallopus. Here's some of those large rocks that you don't really realize how how large they are. Very nice rock outcropping. And then at the bottom there, you can see the cars as they line up the hill at the Spay and Neuter Clinic. We talked about the citizen review process. They held two meetings. Six individuals attended the first meeting, none of the second. The summary of the meetings are included in the staff report, which you have. Concerns were about where the new construction could go and once explained that the new construction was going to be in the same area and grade as the former location of the low cost Spay and Neuter. The applicant reported that the concerns were basically addressed. We we gave proper notice, the 300 foot surrounding property owner notice, as well as posted on site and in the Kingman Minor Newspaper. Neighborhood property owners attended the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 10th, 2023. The owners expressed concerns over the potential impact the zone would have, zone change would have on the neighboring, the neighborhood above there that was all residential zoned. The commission took into consideration these currents concerns, which are reflected in the recommendations and are discussed in more detail in the analysis. Department comments are, as cited below, but also incorporated into the staff report and as well as the the proposed recommendation from the commission and also we've prepared ordinance 1947, which would reflect the potential approval by this body incorporating the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The purpose of the request is, according to the applicant, is to fully develop that lower vacant piece now, which is the commercial site to develop that as the, what do they call, the physical therapy facility and which could include some outdoor recreational amenities as well. Including basketball court, et cetera. You can kind of see that in that lower concept plan on the left side there. The aerial photo on the right shows the original request, and fortunately, we have the ability to show the individual parcels as they were plotted originally. So the original request incorporated, included six of those original plotted parcels. Here's the overall concept plan, and that blue area is the area that's in question for rezoning. The analysis, I won't go into that more because this is all in your staff report, and I think you understand the request. Let me know if you have any questions as we go along. But just generally, the the amendment needs to be consistent with the goals and general plan. The proposed amendment won't be, will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, convenience, or welfare of the city, and will add to the public good as described in the general plan. So the the part of this is the PNC Commission recommendation. After discussion or public testimony and discussing with the applicant and amongst themselves, they recommended that the original area on the left side that's in red, including, that included six plotted parcels, plotted lots, be reduced to this, to the area that they only really want to develop anyway. And that's reflected on the right side there. So it's only three plotted lots, which are generally the edge of the bluff area and then down below in case they want to develop that. It'll be appropriate for commercial. We'll go into the analysis more. The analysis does conclude with, and is incorporated in the conditions of approval. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously to, seven to zero, to vote for that modified approval of the request from single family residential to C3 business, commercial service business. The conditions they recommended were a driveway and will not be permitted on Market Street. That's the street above on the bluff. Any grading of the hillside will comply with our hillside development standards. The subject property needs to be combined as a unified parcel for development purposes. And then number four, the development of the subject property will be in accordance with our City of Kingman Streets and Sidewalks Development Rules and Regulations, the Kingman Utility Regulations, and our unified Details for Public Works Construction, sponsored and distributed by the Maricopa Association of Governments and as amended by the City of Kingman, and then finally, the City of Kingman Design and Administrative Manual for Drainage. I guess that's it. I didn't have a conclusion slide. By the way, I was filling in for Rich, our long lasting 30 year retiree, so he did, he did a good job on this this report and worked out the solution and everything with the commission and and everyone involved. I think he did a great job on that. But I'm here for any questions you may have.
Actually, I think we'll have the public hearing first and then council. We will then afterwards have comments and questions and more for Gary, so stick close here, Gary.
Thank you.
I would like to open this public hearing for any public comment or questions on this matter. Is there anybody here in chambers that would like to ask questions? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Gary, I said it wouldn't take long. I think we have some questions for you.
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor Savel.
Question about traffic. So I saw in the report that there's going to be no access to go onto Market Street, and that is to protect the property or at the request of the residential owners in that area. I'm just concerned about the traffic dumping into Andy Divine, that highly trafficked area, especially in the morning, in the evening, and you know, I just, was there anything that was talked about? I mean, I'm I'm sure that traffic is something that's considered when these things come up. I would just be curious to know if there was any comments about traffic dumping right into Andy Divine because it is a concern of mine.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think everybody notices the traffic along there, but the the thing to keep in mind is the really developing a connection from market down to the site is not, as far as I understand, feasible at this point, and there's no intention to develop up there anyway. So it's kind of a placeholder up there. It it will, I guess, the issue will come up if there's further development requests in the future, such as homes, or if they do in fact want to expand commercial up there. But currently, the development is just down below, and they will be able to accommodate all their parking down below. So, yeah, they only have that primary access onto Andy Divine. None proposed up through Market Street, which there would be a lot of improvements need to be made to that street. There would also, again, that feasibility of, I don't know, switchbacks to get up there. It's it's pretty difficult, so, but that's my understanding. You can ask our city engineer if you have more questions on that.
Okay. I I still am concerned about the traffic going in and out. I I don't know what kind of what kind of patience or where, you know, how how busy is it going to get there? I don't know if that was in the report, but I know we try our best not to give ingress and egress onto major roads, you know, too much because of traffic, and there's just no, there's no traffic control.
Yeah, they do currently have access to Andy Divine, so they have that, you know, grandfathered in, but as far as rezoning, it's only a minor portion of commercial development, whereas the whole site down below is is you know, depending on traffic impacts or things like that, that would be something that would be looked at when they propose a development and have more details. But just for rezoning and the scale of this one, I don't think traffic impacts were needed at that time, but that's something the engineer can comment on if he needs to.
Okay, thank you.
But I understand your concern.
Vice Mayor, you do have a legitimate concern because ever since the expansion of the pet and animal cleaning up there, which was always busy to begin with when when the building was down below, it's it's, there's a lot more traffic there, and this is going to even add more to it. So it is a very valid concern. So thank you for those comments. Any other comments from council? Mr. Savage?
Yes, thank you. A question. You stated that there would be no driveways allowed in Market, correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Here in the analysis, it says, however, once rezoned, there's no guarantee that commercial development could not occur on the upper part.
Yes, I I noticed that too. I think when, what we do is we take a staff report that we present to the planning commission, and usually we just modify basically who it's from and to whom and present that to you as the commission report. On this one, because there were some changes made, I think that was a carryover. I don't think that was intended to be in this commission report. So that's why I think that's there.
Do we need to rephrase that then, since we're gonna, if we want to work on our?
I don't think that's a condition of approval.
I just, okay.
They shrunk up the amount of lots, and I believe.
Yes, that's part of that.
There was an easement, a non egress easement or something. They talked about that.
They talked about that, but that's.
But but that was basically the non access for Market Street is what that, if that's in there.
That was part of the agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
And that was allowing the full commercial rezon. Having that, getting that easement recorded and dedicated was more complex than just saying, all right, we'll reduce it to three lots. And that pretty much solved everything as far as concerns about commercial development up top.
Correct.
Yeah.
Council, just getting reports that people cannot hear some of the counselors on the microphones, and we are recording this for posterity, so please talk into your microphones.
Thank you, Manager.
By law, that's required.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments from council?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Watkins. Gary, I apologize. Remind me of your last name.
Likeness.
Likeness? Mr. Likeness, what's the purpose of reducing the recommendation or the request from 23 to 26? Like, it it goes from lots 23 to 28. That's the original request, and then you made a modification for 26 to 28?
Yes.
Why?
That that was the compromise that the commission, the public, and the developer worked out in the public, in the public hearing.
Now, this is being rezoned from medium density residential to C3, meaning commercial services business?
Yeah.
At least that's what the desires.
Yeah, all the commercial development that you could see along Stockton Hill Road, at least north of the freeway.
But this is not, this is not a heavy industrial
No.
type zoning. So what are the type of businesses that would be allowed under a C3? C3 zoning? Just as an example.
There's a host, everything you see north of I-40 on Stockton Hill Road could go in there, including fast food, business buildings, real estate offices, even some small manufacturing, which would be generally indoors, but could be that just the the range of uses, restaurants.
Okay, but but it's still.
It's a very open commercial zone.
Right.
As far as uses.
And most of the time, these commercial service business zones, they don't severely impact residential communities, just as most of the Stockton Hill Road businesses don't impact the residential communities right behind them, right?
Yeah, we we hope it works out. We have some standards that you have to, if you build a new commercial development, got to put higher walls. You have to, of course, make sure your lighting is shielded, all that kind of stuff that's supposed to help it be compatible with adjacent properties.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Likeness. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Pat. Okay. Can we have a mo, any other questions for Gary? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a motion then for approving 5A?
Mayor Watkins, actually, I would like to make a motion to amend.
Yes, yes, Mr. Pat.
I apologize. Approve with modifications, if you will. I think that the property owner is in the best position and knows what they're requesting when they make these requests. This rezoning to commercial service businesses will not detrimentally impact the surrounding residential areas, and they did request this change to benefit their property and put in a, sounds like a physical therapy or rehabilitation center. I would like to make just one small amendment, not reduce it from 26 to 28 lot, but I would like to grant them their full request from lot 23 to lot 28.
And and I'll jump in. Yes, Mr. Cooper, I was gonna look for, look at you for some guidance.
Council can always make those kind of requests, but that's something that we would not be able to, if that goes forward, we would not be able to prove it tonight because the hearing was for this reduced size.
Correct.
And that would potentially change the 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 impact of folks coming out and speaking about this item. So if that's something the council wishes to proceed with, we would have to have a do over, I guess is what you'd want to call it, with another public hearing.
Okay, so basically, Mr. Pat just proposed a a motion for an amendment, which we would then not be able to act on tonight. And we could approve his amendment, but then we'd have to bring it back.
You would need to bring it back for a further hearing to have the the, any affected individuals who may choose to to make their opinion known about this project because you're expanding, going beyond what we are, what we're planned on doing tonight. If you're doing something that was less than, you could probably proceed, but because we're opening up a little bit wider, that would could potentially cause some grief for some folks that weren't aware that this project could be, have a bigger footprint.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, I was, actually, Mr. Walker, I was going to ask you because I know you were at that planning and zoning meeting, so if you could give us some more.
I believe we have representation from Selberg and Associates, who is on retainer with the property owner. Maybe he could come up and tell us if what they got from the planning and zoning would make them happy with what their plans were. I I believe it did, but I would love to hear from.
If you could come up and introduce yourself, welcome.
And we still have a motion on the floor, by the way.
That's what I was gonna say.
That's true, we do. Do we need to act on that motion, or do we?
Can I withdraw my motion, and then I will renew it later?
You can definitely withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw my motion at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pat. Yes. If you'd like to introduce yourself, please, council.
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name is Rob Sampson with Selberg Associates. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Absolutely, we agree with Mr. Platt. That's what we asked for originally. I don't think there's any benefit to slowing down the process though, because it does grant us everything that we we really need. It actually puts the the property owner in a better benefit to be able to sell the property as a residential property and and monetize that, you know, in the future if they elect to. So we're actually okay with what you guys are presenting and discussing this afternoon or this evening. So, you know, we prefer to just continue this process on and allow it to proceed through the motions of bureaucracy and let it go. And if you guys are willing to accept it, we're willing to accept it as well. We're not opposed to going to another meeting if we have to, but it's certainly what we asked for originally was we would like all six lots. It just made sense. It completed the you know, the general plan for the City of Kingman, but because of some opposition from landowners that were, you know, adjacent to the property, we just, you know, we're okay with what they're proposing, so.
Mayor Watkins, may I inquire?
Yes, Mr. Pat.
Mr. Sampson, I want to essentially give the property owners what they're requesting because it's their property. I believe that they have a right to do with their property as long as, you know, it conforms with certain requirements. I don't want to cause a hindrance or any more hurdles or delay the process if that's not what the property owner wants. I just want to know, would you rather have us move forward today and approve the ordinance as is, or would you rather have us look into granting the full request?
I appreciate your question, Mr. Pat. I would say that we'd like to just proceed as it is today.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Samley.
Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Since you do represent the applicant, can you speak to my concern for traffic?
I can actually. So the, a couple of things you should, should, I guess, understand through the process. What we're looking for is, traffic is always going to be a concern. We have a utility commission that we're working through right now. The city of Kingman's engineering department's been very gracious in granting us full access to anything that we needed. But there is potential that we're going to have to close down Andy Divine to extend the sewer line. That should ring some bells for everybody, because driving through Kingman on a regular basis, I know that that's not something that I want to be responsible for. As far as the rezon tonight, we're talking about just those three pieces of property. By right, we have the ability to, you know, to do a commercial building on the low-cost patent neared property, but one of the conditions in our design review that we did in our pre-application meeting was that we consolidate from multiple entrances to one singular entrance, which will help, you know, direct traffic to one point, so it'll be a little safer. We're totally okay with that, it actually fits our site plan way better. So it's still the same amount of cars going in and going out, but at least they're not going out at three different points of discharge and access.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, it was my pleasure.
Okay. Mr. Pat, I think your questions have been answered.
They have.
So I, can we have a motion then on item 5A, approving ordinance number 1947?
Also move.
So we have a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6, department report, 6A, 2022 water system leak report. Mr. Owens, good to see you again.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Thank you again, mayor, council.
I just close the green.
Thank you. We're here to tonight talk a little bit about some of the leak problems we've had in the water system this past year. So a presentation tonight, we'll go through, I've got a little diagram, a utility diagram kind of explain the difference between service lines and main lines. We'll look at some mapping of leakage based upon, again, main lines and service lines, talk about pipe age a little bit in the system, and then go through the root cause analysis that we did earlier this summer. And get to the, we'll end up with the opportunities for improvement that we identified, along with our go-forward plan, and any questions that you might have, so. So this is a typical diagram of utilities and responsibilities. So essentially, you have the water main in the street, or in the alley, depending on where you are. And the service, the part of the service lateral from, and service lateral is just another way of saying service line, from the water main to the water meter is the city's responsibility. From the water meter to the home is the homeowner's responsibility. On the sewer side, it's the homeowner's responsibility out to the sewer main as there's no meter on the sewer side. And these are just examples of what we're talking about, types of leaks. So the photograph on the left is a main line leak. Typically, these are going to be at higher pressures, higher volumes, potentially more property damage. You're losing asphalt and maybe some other infrastructure on these type of leaks, and they are greater water loss occurrence through main line leaks. And then service line leaks, typically, like on the photograph on the right, they're more of the slow, slow soakers, there is water loss with those, and there can be property damage, but generally, it's a less significant property damage than a main line leak. So through the, a lot of the work that the engineering department's done for the last two or three years, we've been able to incorporate our work orders as we respond to leak complaints. Excuse me. And are able to depict those on a map. So this kind of shows the highest concentration of main line leaks for the last two to three years. This is kind of up in the North Kingman, Birdland, Butler area, and this is kind of where we've been concentrating our efforts on our main line replacement projects. And when we're doing these main line replacement projects, we're also replacing those service lines to those customers in conjunction with the main line replacement. We've probably spent a little bit over $3 million the last three years in this area between design and construction of projects, and there's still one ongoing out there currently. The service line leakage, you can see, is, it's a little bit widespread, concentrated in a different part of town. Generally, it's located south of I-40. Cecil Davis subdivision, Golden Gate Edition subdivision, and, oh, actually, let me go back, I missed something, sorry. So on the main line leakage, we had 20 this past year, and generally average between 30 and 50 a year. Service line leakage, again, is kind of concentrated south of I-40 in some of the older subdivisions. And this year, we've had 1,200 service line leaks, and we average about 400 a year.
Rob?
Yes, sir.
When you said leaks, are those typically on the homeowner's side, or are they on the service, on our side?
They're on both.
On both sides, okay.
Typically, most of them are on our side, between the main and the meter.
Okay. Thanks.
So, and this is from the Water Master Plan, this, it's, it's a busy map, I know, but it shows that area south of I-40. And I think a lot of people kind of have it in their head that most cities build out, kind of like the east side of Kingman did, where you have, you know, Wallopai foothills or Rancho Santa Fe, you have these subdivisions developed. And they are mostly built out within the next five, six, seven, 10 years. When you get into areas like closer to Stockton Hill Road and Andy Divine, you know, Cecil Davis is kind of on the, on the east side of 66. Golden Gate Edition's on the west side of 66. You know, Golden Gate Edition was recorded in 1927. Kingman didn't become a city until 1952. So we've got houses that are built there in Golden Gate Edition, Cecil Davis, some of these other areas, that are built anywhere between, you know, 1940. Just like in my neighborhood, you know, my house was built in 1964. There's a new house being built around the corner from me. So those houses are being built from, you know, a long time ago up to next week. So in, so when those services go in, there'll be different age material on those water services. So I'd just say, most of Kingman is probably more like that than your typical community like you would see in the valley where they were built out in a more, you know, in a quicker manner as subdivisions were developed. So in July, you know, we, we realized we had this issue with service line leaks, and we reached out to AJT Solutions. And it's a firm that's headed by a, a water operator who has grade four certifications in, you know, water treatment, distribution, wastewater distribution and treatment. And so they've been helping us out with trying to determine what the cause, what the root causes of the issue were. So again, we looked at, you know, the leak data that we had, the infrastructure characteristics, the environmental factors, and trying to come down to, to the root causes. We also went through, you know, professional publications, the American Water Works Association standards, research papers, and some of the other trade articles related to potential causes in order to get to this opportunities for improvement, what we could do better. So the initial approach looked at pressure fluctuations, age of pipe, monsoon rains, and other factors. So with pressure fluctuations, you know, they can have a direct correlation to increases in leaks. For this reason, you know, we had installed data loggers, which are just kind of recording devices that go throughout the systems on valves or hydrants, and they can monitor pressures over a period of time. We also do pressure logging at 50 locations throughout the system every month, and this is in conjunction with some of the water quality sampling that we do. So once we, you know, brought in the, the, went through the existing log of pressures that we take, plus this additional data, we didn't find any large fluctuations in the system that would lead to this increase in leaks. So the age of the pipes, you know, so, you know, we're not that different from most systems with, or most older water systems. Historical information on when a house was built in 1964, for example, what the material of that service line was, or when it went in, you know, we don't have some of that data. We have data on when meters are installed. In that case, though, it could be the second or third meter that's been installed at that place. So as part of this, and it's also is required by the lead and copper rule revisions, required for all utilities to complete a service line inventory. So that's to go through and identify pipe material, in particular because it's lead and copper rule, identify whether pipes are potentially lead or not. So we are in that process, working with a different consultant on that one, you know, with that, anticipate that being done in the winter of 2024. So we're getting better information on that as we go. Our preliminary review has identified service line pipe failures that did happen well before expected lifetime of pipe material. Some of the other commonalities were materials were all plastic and primarily polyethylene. And that many of the laterals that were installed, were installed in native soils and backfilling without apparent clean fill materials at the time. And we know that from just when we've done the repairs and dug up the line, that there'd be a, you know, it'd be rubbing against a pretty good sized rock, you know, in the ditch. Monsoon rain, so, you know, 2022 was a significant monsoon rain season. You know, according to Mahogany County Flood Control, Kingman received almost 11 inches of rain, Wallopai foothills almost 15. So with heavy rains, original backfill material will move, especially if there are clays. Change in the plasticity of the soil will cause movement of the materials, and again, move some of those larger rocks, doesn't have to be a large rock, just move some of that aggregate material around to where it's, it's rubbing up against the pipe as the pipe moves. So, you know, we, we do believe that that was a significant root cause, the, kind of the anomaly in the leaks. Again, we talked a little bit about this earlier, but the bedding in the backfill, you know, depending on how that pipe is put in the ground, and just, you know, it's supposed to be kind of installed in a snaking motion, I think I got a picture coming up here a little while, but that allows the pipe to expand and contract with the heat and the cold, and the wet and the dry. And having those proper fill material in there, proper bedding material in there, keeps that from letting those aggregates operate against that pipe, you know, over time, lead to leaks. UV degradation is another potential cause. UV pipe, you know, or UV light will cause degradation to plastic pipe. It's kind of hard, again, for us to document this on some of these older pipes. But again, this will be something that'll be incorporated in as we're doing these replacements, and also going forward with, you know, how we're handling the pipe that we order and store and install, and also maybe looking at the specifications for pipe material going forward and ensuring that, you know, that, that has the proper protective casing to protect it from, excuse me, UV degradation. Disinfection products, so there has been some research to show that certain disinfection project, products can cause degradation to plastic pipe, certain types of plastic pipe. It's more common with polypropylene than it is with polyethylene, and I'm not aware that we have too much polypropylene in our system. But again, the use of chlorine and chloramines, and generally, the only difference is the chloramines have ammonia mixed in, and chloramines are generally used more with surface water conditions than groundwater conditions. But the use of chlorine is, is really an industry standard, and it's the most common water disinfection product in the United States, and it is what we use here in Kingman. And it really is essential for the public health. So on to our opportunities for improvement. Again, we'd be ensuring that UV rays, or the pipe is protected from UV light, from manufacture through distribution, you know, on-site and installation. We'll look at, maybe go through an analysis for the specifications on whether a different pipe material would be better. PEX pipe, which is kind of similar to if you've had any plumbing work done in your house recently, it's the most common, well, it's very common used material, but it's manufactured in a different way, and it's uses the connectors and adapters, and it is available for service lines now. It is not really susceptible to the UV light exposure, and it does carry a 20-year warranty, and I believe it's in the same price range. Copper's kind of like the old school, time-tested, improving material. It is more costly, and it is more, it's delicate to work with. And I think, you know, that was part of the reason that it went out of, it didn't, it wasn't the major material anymore, I think was, that it's expensive and it's easy to ruin it out in the field if you crimp it, you know, that's a lot of money laying on the ground. Here's a picture kind of showing the installation and bedding. Again, when it's installed, it should be in a snaking method before backfilling, pipers are recommended, and that'll allow the expansion. And it should be clean bedding material. Disinfectant, again, you know, they, they, they are the best disinfection source for, for water, and essential to safety. We need to maintain, you know, a chlorine residual in the system to ensure public health. What we try to, what we maintain in our system meets the best management practices for the water industry. So just going forward, what we've done, so we've created a new CIP sheet specifically for service lines. As I said before, they were kind of addressed along with main lines. We're looking to fund a program that would have a separate service line replacement projects. We'll be working to complete a service line inventory. We'll look at our installation specifications and our pipe specifications, and also going forward, I think, you know, there's a lot of areas on the water side that we could, you know, look to improve our asset management. So with that, I can try to answer your questions if you have any. I don't know if Mr. Foggan had anything to add, or Kealan, but. I don't know if Mr. Foggan had anything to add, or Kealan, but I can try to answer any questions in my head.
Any questions from council, or Mr. Owens? Or comments?
I have one.
Yes.
You said you went from how many, how many leaks a year to how many?
On the service line leaks, it went from about 400 to 1,200.
Wow.
Yeah.
Now, I see you have a new vacuum excavator?
Yes, sir.
How's that working out for you guys?
Good. And we also, we've been utilizing contractor to replace service lines for us. We had kind of a, it was still in a very busy building period when our, when our problem kind of peaked, it was kind of difficult for us to get contractors, but, you know, right now, we do have a contractor that's actively out there replacing service lines.
Good. Thank you.
And of course, that peak was caused mostly through the monsoon season, those three months of active monsoon, correct?
Yes, sir. That was, that was definitely, we feel, one of the root causes of that, yes.
Okay. Any other, yes, Mr. Ward?
The only question I would have was, why would it be an inordinate amount of service line failures under the, in the city's part and not in other, like from the sidewalk to the house? Is it because of their pressures on bridges?
No, I mean, generally, they're not, you know, we do, or like a contractor will do the service line installation up to the meter, you know, the subdivision contractor. So, I mean, they could be done at different times, so the...
Okay. That was my question.
They could be done at different times, yeah. But, I mean, we don't...
Because you would think with that many failures from the main to the meter, you would see a lot more from the meter end if it were done with the same...
Well, and there, I'm sure there are some, you know, they're not, they're not going to be reported to us, you know. When, when my service line blew up, you know, this is probably 10 or 12 years ago, you know, I replaced that, and I didn't report it to the city because I knew it was my responsibility, and I'm sure there are people that do that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. Here are no more questions. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Appreciate that presentation. Item 6B, mural program presentation. Yes, Mr. Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we have been discussing the mural program for a number of years. We actually started a program called the facade improvement program that has been very successful over the last couple of years. And in that process, we had envisioned expanding the mural program as part of the facade grant program. And so, I think, three years ago, Sylvia, it's been a while since we...
A year.
What's that?
Yeah, we were here last year.
Yeah, we were here last year.
Yes, yes.
But we've been working on this for several years, and finally are to a point where we feel like it's time to move forward with the mural program in conjunction or in addition to the wildly successful facade grant program that we had. So Sylvia has compiled all the information for this and is, is going to present that, and hopefully, we've got a program that everybody thinks is good. So with that, Ms. Sylvia.
Thank you. I think I'll let you continue this. You did such a great job. So, yep, like, like City Manager said, we do have a few programs that we started, and basically in 2019, we had the facade program, which is still in existence. We did parklets for a bit there, and now we're moving on to murals. And this is trying, going along with how a lot of our downtown business owners were doing murals on their own, and then some desire to also have a program that we could do murals with, so this is, this is where we're starting. What do murals do for our community? I know I gave this information to you ahead of time, but I'll go briefly over for those who haven't seen it. It does increase overall attraction of the space, encourages public and private partnership, discourages graffiti and vandalism, attracts traffic to our downtown area, and also to have people stay longer and visit longer. Some of the murals that we're trying to attract are interactive, such as this one here, where people will stop and take a picture within the mural, so that's something we'd like to have with this program. We did set an initial boundary for our first year here, which is mainly downtown, as you can see on this map, includes, let's see, First through Sixth Street, and then Andy, Beal, some of the alley is included on a couple of these streets here as well. And so this is where we're starting. Property owners and tenants of commercially zoned buildings can apply for this program. Third-party organizations may apply as well with the consent of a property owner. For the program itself, the maximum reimbursement per applicant is $5,000. So I did provide a little example of what it would be like if they had a $5,000 mural project, and they were reimbursed 90%. They'd get 4,500 back, and the total cost is $500. And we do have $20,000 for this program funded in this fiscal cycle. So proposed murals, and that's for those applying, should encourage the interactivity, should not state the business name, otherwise then we run into it being assigned and have different process. Contribute to the visual enhancement, why it's not coming out, contribute to the visual enhancement of the property or area, and that's kind of what 102 says. Also, the current murals program, and this is where we did come back, because last time we didn't have a, maybe a theme to go with the program, and so this, that's where we did a little work over the last year, and came up for this year's theme to be history, western heritage, Route 66, mining, Arizona nature and skies, or reflective of the business. And that way, we have a better criteria for those applying, and so that's there. Here's some more examples of interactive murals, and some of these are in Arizona, with cactus, yeah, it's kind of, that one is in Arizona, down in the Mesa area. And otherwise, application project itself, economic development does have these programs, yet we are working very close with the finance department, and Monica Murphy in the finance department is our grants administrator, who will take in the packets and make sure they're incomplete, get them out to the team to review them, and move forward with that. And so that's been a great addition to our program. She's excellent to work with. And this is very short, but do you have any questions on what I presented and the packet I provided for the staff report?
I know 20, you said 20, we've allocated $20,000 in this fiscal. How are we at right now?
We have the $20,000, because we're just going to be opening this program up for this fiscal cycle.
Do we have anybody already expressing interest in this to move forward?
Yeah, we do. There's the college itself, MCC Downtown, has a little class that they would like to get their class involved in, in doing a mural, and then a couple of the businesses already said they're interested in participating.
Great, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, questions?
I do have, I have a couple of questions. Refresh my memory, since we're on a theme, is where the money comes from. Can you tell us where the money comes from?
I want to say general.
This is just a general fund project.
Okay, perfect. And then, who does the murals? Do they, do they find their own individual to commission it? Do they, how is that done?
Yeah, we do ask for documentation on the muralist that they want to do the mural, like past murals they did.
So you do vet the individual?
Yes, the individual does have to seek who they want to use, or the group who's participating in the program.
Right, but you vet the individuals that are actually doing the mural as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, I will add, there's a protective coating component to that as well, that actually wasn't taken into account when the, kind of the famous mural on the back of the theater was done. It was done, and then we, we, the city, came in and put the, what is known as the frog seal over it to save it, because it would not have lasted very long.
So, I'd like to expand just a little further on that. So with, when the applicant submits the application, they will submit a rendition of what they want to propose, the location, the type of paint used, the seal coat, et cetera. So it will go through a full review before it's put up.
Okay. Mayor Watkins, if I...
Yes, Mr. Pat.
I'm a prosecutor, and I always get really interested when I see something that says discourages graffiti and vandalism. I think it makes law enforcement's jobs easier, as well as prosecutor's jobs easier. Can you just explain to me how these murals would discourage graffiti and vandalism? And then, another question I have is, with these coats that are applied, like the frog seal Mr. Foggan was mentioning, if somebody does come in, draw graffiti or spray paint over the mural, will it be easier to clean off?
Yeah, those are questions that I need good answers for, as far as the seal coat itself.
Yeah, the seal coat does help clean up. Much easier to protect and save that piece of art if it's coated and receives some additional paint over the top. As a matter of fact, the mural that I was referencing actually was graffitied and it's been removed, so there's...
So the coating easily removes additional graffiti?
It allows for easier removal, yes.
Okay. But, how do murals discourage graffiti or vandalism?
I would like to say that if there's this program available where they can, people can use their artistic, you know, abilities to do them, that they would use the program or not destroy something so beautiful. This was more based, that answer is more based on the research I did prior to the program, and it was one of the things that the cities found, that when they had the murals programs, that it did. So I'm probably not the expert to answer all the reasons why, but that is something I had found while researching the projects in other cities.
Okay, so most of these statements were made from other city websites?
That one in particular, yes. That one in particular, yeah, because I don't have that experience here with the program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I would think that whenever there's a blank surface, it's luring someone to tag it or do something with it, as opposed to putting a mural on it, which is vetted, and would maybe slow that down, that desire to do that.
I hope so.
Because also maybe, because oftentimes when graffiti is done, it's also, they think they're doing art, but they oftentimes don't want to cover over somebody else's art. So, there's lots of different ways to look at it.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, Sylvia, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Item 6C...
Mayor, just to finish up on that, we are prepared to move forward with the program. We just wanted to make sure that the council understood that we have developed the program, and we are, as Sylvia said, I know there are several building owners or, and/or businesses that are wanting to move forward with murals, and so we now have the program in place, and we are going to be taking applications based on those rules, so...
Right, and funds, of course, have been set aside for.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Item 6C, Mr. Foggan?
All right. There was a request to just share the information about the inspection department's four-day work week, and so, prepared to do that, happily to do that, actually. What I thought would be a help to the council is actually to kind of start from the beginning of when we, how we got to the six-month, or how we got to the four-day work week, and one of the first things we did was a six-month evaluation of what we were seeing, how many people were walking in, what did Fridays look like as far as business? And so we looked, we studied that for six months, and we found that our highest volume of customers were on Mondays and Friday, or Mondays and Thursdays. We found over that six-month period that we were averaging one walk-in customer on Fridays, over a six-month period. So pretty slow on Fridays. There was an average of three people a week that were waiting for the doors to open at our, for the inspection services, kind of showing that perhaps the hours of operations could be expanded and be helpful to those wanting and needing the service that the inspection department provided. So, then, once we did that six-month evaluation, we then did a pilot program, and basically in that pilot program, looked to see, you know, how that four-day work week worked. And so, one of the things that we did, or continued to provide, is we provided building inspection five days a week. That continues to this day. Our building inspectors, knowing that construction happens all week long, we left inspectors in the field to do all the inspection requirements on Monday through Friday. The city notified local builders about the change, and with that, we monitored complaints and provided information on the services being provided. One of the things that were, I would say, we found that people were confused about was that field inspections were going to continue five days a week, and that there would be no interruption in field work. Customers did start almost immediately taking advantage of the extended hours of the 10-hour workday, with people utilizing that seven to eight in the morning window, as well as five to six. And, so that was taken advantage of and being used almost immediately. And then, of course, we were able to meet all of the plan review deadlines that we had in place prior to, and we continue to be able to meet all of, all of the deadlines required for plan review. So, on offering a four-day work week, there's obviously advantages and disadvantages, and just wanted to walk you through those. I just talked about a little bit, the extended business hours, that 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, where customers can come in without having to take off of work. What we're finding is that from seven to eight is kind of the builders, contractors are utilizing that more, and we're getting the five to six folks that are people that are working that have, you know, small projects, and not having to take off early, but being able to walk in and receive full services for an additional hour after the norm, what there would be a normal workday for them. There's actually, for the four-day work week, there's improved productivity. There's less time being used by employees because they have a three-day, basically a three-day weekend. Also, we are not seeing what you see in a business that runs five days a week, where two, three o'clock in the afternoon, people are planning their weekend and what they're going to be doing on Friday night. What we have are the 10-hour day where people are working hard all the way up to six o'clock Thursday to meet deadlines, that they would normally have to take advantage of on Fridays as well. So, we do and have and continue to see productivity in those four days. It really, it gives the city a higher end advantage, and that's something that we're seeing, we've been seeing, we continue to see where people like four-day work weeks. It's really an attractor, and is, we're seeing people leave and telling us that they, one of the reasons that they considered us was because we offer a four-day work week. The other big advantage is that most of our building maintenance and repairs in our, in our buildings are being done on, being completed on Fridays, where it's not interrupting employees, it's not interrupting the public. Business is conducted in those 40 hours, Monday through Thursday, and then, basically, building maintenance has all of Friday, and we've seen that just in this building with roof leaks and improvements, where we've been able to, you know, when we installed the glass out at the counters for our utility billing, that was all done on Fridays, and didn't stop us, do one thing to stop us from being able to help customers and get our work done. The disadvantage, there's not a lot, but there are a couple that we acknowledge. The four-day work week breaks the five-day work week norm. It's just kind of the way it's always been done, and there's the frustration of customers that want or need an immediate answer... the frustration of customers that want or need an immediate answer or help. And recognizing that, I'll have kind of what we're doing and what we have done on that. The other piece is that four-day work, or the 10-hour workday in the four-hour week, or four-day week in the 10-hour day is grueling. It, you know, when you're getting to work at seven, working till six, that is, it's a long day. And I think, you know, the fact that we've been doing this now for three and a half years, I think our employees have gotten used to it. And like I said, it's actually been, it's actually been an attractor in a market where you need every advantage that you need, can get, to hire those employees. Always looking to improve or continue doing what we're doing. Obviously, we're going to continue to provide building inspections five days a week, that we recognize the importance of the field work and what our building inspectors are doing. The city is currently working with a vendor, I think this was mentioned in Chief Jaeger's presentation, that we are working, we are working on a system that will allow electronic plan submittal. We're hoping to have that complete by the end of fiscal year, this fiscal year. And so, the ability to, for people to submit their plans, any, you know, 24 hours a day, is going to be there as well. Something that we've been looking at and researching, and I think we've got a product that actually is going to be really user-friendly, and both internal and external users will find it to be pretty easy. Of course, we continue to work on our website. All of our forms are currently there. Any changes, additional information, we are committed to making sure those changes happen, and that, you know, as updated information happens, that it is put on as soon as possible. One of the things that we've been talking about is frequently asked questions. People seem to like that, so that is something that we're looking to add, not just to inspections, but to a lot of our different pages. Because generally, as counsel knows, you get, you get kind of people asking you questions, and they start sounding like, oh yeah, I've answered this, or I've heard this. So the frequently asked questions. So that, that's really our four-day work week, and I believe that is all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Comments or questions for Mr. Foggan about this subject?
I just had a couple, because I know it didn't work for Public Works, I knew they were back to a five-day work week.
Correct.
I've been approached by a utility company, a director there, asking how we could get away with it. I also had a county director ask me how--
Probably because we hired one of their employees.
This was long before that. But I'm sure now they're really wanting to know. But, you know, it's just not for the building department, it was for the water department, City Hall, is why I would love, you know, I appreciate this. But, you know, and I don't have a problem with doing, employees doing four-ten's in my business, as long as we can cover a Friday, because I couldn't shut down Fridays.
Right.
You know, we're a service business, and I think the city's a service business also. So it's, I got mixed feelings on it, I'll just put it that way.
Well, and I will say that those field duties are all happening five days a week. They're just, they're really, I mean, we did, as I pointed out, we did pilot programs, and we basically did the same process for all the different components of the organization. And we do a four-day work week where we can, and where it's not feasible, we are still on the five-day work week. So, it's a good question, though.
Counsel? Yes, Counsel Staley.
Yeah, this was a concern of mine, because I was hearing complaints in the community about not being able to submit plans. And I thought that when we approved this, the building department was not going to be affected. So it's great that they're still doing inspections, but is there a way to stagger employees, so you can still get four-ten's, but have somebody there on Friday?
So our, the way we're currently staffed, we're not nearly deep enough to be able to do four-ten's across the five-day work week.
What about a half, like a half-day on Friday?
It's, so we looked at staggered, we looked at four, the four-nines and the four. Again, it's, it really, basically, the plan submission has not been something that, I mean, in 2022, we received zero formal complaints about being able to submit plans. And we've been doing this for three and a half years. I've kind of thought it was interesting that it's coming up after three and a half years of operating under this system. And we're, the, I will say that the building inspectors, when we first started on the four-ten's, most builders have the building inspector's phone number, and certainly could submit plans to a building inspector. I think it happened a few times early on, but has not been requested that I'm aware of, over that three-year period, so.
I agree with Councilman Walker, this is just a customer service issue, and I think we should look at it. You know, I know people don't normally complain about things to the building department, because they're afraid of blowback, that their plans will take longer. Whether or not that truly happens, I'm not saying it does. I'm just saying, I know people kind of tiptoe around the process, and so they don't always bring in their complaints.
Well, we have established deadlines that we have to meet. So, I mean, we're more than happy to take any comments and suggestions. Like I said, we're in the process, and we've been working on the process of electronic plans submission. So you're actually, at three and a half years, we're coming to an end of having to walk through the door and submit your plans anyway.
And will that be for everybody? You had mentioned it was for builders and developers, but homeowners that are doing additions themselves, or that kind of thing, will they be able to submit that way?
Electronic plan will be for everybody.
Okay, okay. I don't know how everybody else feels, but this is just what I'm hearing in the community.
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Foggan, I appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. It was kind of, I have to say, it was, it was nice to look back on it, and see the effort that we made to look at the, what was being done, and then the pilot, the fact that we did pilot programs. So I actually appreciated the opportunity to revisit the information, so, thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Foggan, we're going to pick on you again, but you have--
Are you picking on me? Oh my gosh, I didn't know that. Well, in that case, I'll keep this short. So Tri-City Council meeting is tomorrow, 10:00 AM. It is in Kingman this quarter, and so we will be right here in chambers, starts at 10:00 AM. And then, just as a reminder, in, we will be closed February 20th, that's Monday, February 20th, for President's Day. And that is all the announcements I have.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Counsel Walker?
The only announcement I have, I attended the groundbreaking yesterday for the new Imobi County Animal Shelter. I saw there was other people there, Manager Foggan, Vice Mayor, Councilman Ward was there, Jamie? I didn't think I saw you, I wasn't sure. There was a big crowd there. It was impressive to see everybody that showed up. It was a big crowd, a little windy. The mayor should have put in for the wind to stop, but we had a few complaints, but yeah, it looks like a great project, and it was a great turnout for the groundbreaking. And that's all I have.
Well, thanks for representing the city, all of you that went, were able to attend that. Counsel Savage?
I have a thing to report.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to say, it was a great opportunity to be able to go to the groundbreaking, and I am very excited for our four-legged friends to have a nice little home in the future.
Great. Counsel Staley?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that the Utah Shakespeare Festival group is going to be doing one show of Othello on February 16th at 7:00 PM at Lee Williams High School.
Okay, that it? Counsel Ward?
I have a--
Counsel Pat?
No announcements.
Just briefly, I, there's lots of always, lots of activities going on in Kingman, and I would once again direct everybody to look at the city website, our Chamber of Commerce website, and of course, our tourism website, Choose Kingman, correct? These are all great websites to review and find out what's happening in our great city. And once again, we appreciate that. Item number eight, council request for future reports and updates.
I have a-- No, Mrs. Staley, go right ahead.
Okay, Counsel Staley.
Yes, in the past, the airport manager and the economic development department have put together a tour of our airport and industrial park for council, so that we can tour it, but also ask questions and understand that asset better. So I'd like to ask that one of those tours please be put together, put on the calendar prior to our budget meetings. Since that is our largest and most important asset, I want to make sure that we're all very familiar with it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Did I hear any votes, Counsel Walker?
Sure.
Oh, we'll get--
Going back to, we are going to be having budgety meetings and everything. The CIP five-year plan, 10-year plan, whatever we're working on, before that meeting, can we make sure, at that meeting, we have our existing debts, and where they're paid from, and our remaining bonding capacity? I know that's going to be big, because we got a lot of decisions to make. And then, on a different subject, I know we, myself, and maybe, maybe Counsel Staley, but I know Counselor Mello, when she was here, we talked about more traffic lights up on Wallaby Mountain Road. I don't know if we've ever heard anything back on that. And I've been getting a lot of complaints on that.
The traffic study is still being done, so--
Okay, when did we expect that? Any idea?
I don't know.
It's under way currently, but I had comments back there.
Yeah, it's going to be in the next, it's going to be in the next couple of months.
Okay, perfect. And then, I think that's it. Oh, the texting for, like, neighborhood services, are we ever going to have that online, where people can text in neighborhood service issues and/or non-911 issues to the 911 center? Is that something we were looking at?
We will report on that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Counsel Walker, and then Counsel Pat. But actually, Counsel Pat, hold on one second. Along those lines, Counsel Walker, I do want to encourage people, once again, Manager Foggan, on the website, on the city website, where if there is, they see something that they want, they question or have a question, or a water leak, or any kind of activity like that, where they need to report it, they can also go to the website too, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, report a concern.
Remind people of that. Counsel Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. My request is for future rezoning ordinances that are coming before the council, that the hearing would include the requested submission from the property owner. That way, it could be fully encapsulated. And then, if the Planning and Zoning Commission puts forward a separate or lesser recommendation, we could either act upon that recommendation, or, just at the same meeting, act upon an amendment to that proposal. That's all.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll work that into a report.
Okay.
I think. Yeah, we'll work that into a report, and walk the council through that.
Thank you, Manager Foggan.
Okay. Hearing none. I think we are all ready to be adjourned. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.